Folks.
Good evening, Joanne.
Good evening.
All right, everyone.
What's, why do we have reverbication? Reverboration.
That works. If you shut off your speaker.
Suzanne, you need to shut off your speaker.
It is.
Okay. There you go.
There you go.
Perfect. Joanne, can you still hear us?
Joanne? Joanne's frozen. Oh, no, she's not. But she can't hear us.
No, she can't hear.
I can't hear you guys now. I don't know if you can hear me.
We can.
We can hear you.
Yes, we can.
I can't hear you at all ever since Suzanne pushed whatever button she pushed. Now I can hear you.
No, there's something.
Is the Zoom muted? Is what it's on?
It is. It is. Yes. But then she can't hear. Can you hear us now?
No.
Now I can't hear you at all.
Come over.
This was happening.
Get on the pony and ride.
Echo cancelling speaker phone.
Nothing.
What does that mean? The TV giving an audio feed. What does that? How come we, how are we hearing you?
That, that's right. Big brother.
Oh, but we can hear, we can hear Joanne. She just can't, you can hear us. Okay, so we have on microphone echo cancelling speaker phone. Unmute microphone to test. And then we have speaker echo cancel cancelling speaker phone. Yes, speaker phone. And you, that maybe someone was offering some help here. I mean, this has happened before.
I can't, no, I can't hear anybody.
Yeah, we haven't really.
Oh, now I can.
Yeah, but we're getting an echo. And it's coming through your, it's coming through your computer Suzanne. You have to turn off your. What? No, you have this on. This one?
Perfect.
Okay, yeah, it was you Suzanne. Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Yep, all good, yep.
So that you, that is your speaker.
The speaker was on.
Yeah, it was Suzanne's computer. Was that a pun? Sounds good.
All right, so I will call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board together today is Tuesday, October 8, 2024. Because this is a hybrid meeting, we have some procedures to kind of go over. This hybrid meeting will be conducted in person and remotely over Zoom. Attendance by planning board members may be in person or remote and both types of attendance still count towards quorum. This meeting may be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. So to use Zoom, you'll need to use the link in the agenda or download the Zoom application. You'll need the webinar ID to join in by phone only. When conducting hybrid meetings, we will endeavor to keep meeting operations as close to the standard procedures as possible. However, use of the remote platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. While boards and board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio, public participants invited to speak by the chair will be in person, on video and/or on audio. Public participants joining by Zoom will be muted and with no video feed from them. Public lines will be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business and to eliminate background noise. For general meetings and only for which, under which the chair solicits public comments, members of the public participating in the Zoom meeting may submit a written quest, request via chat provided they conclude their full name and address for the public record. Members of the viewing public, viewing the meeting on ECAT may submit questions in writing to the email address as found on the agenda. The chair reserves the right to respond to questions during the live meeting, but may limit such time for such activities. Any questions not addressed in the meeting may be answered afterwards via email. Will be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting for the public record. All votes will be arrived roll call. And for public hearings during the public testimony, members of the public joining via Zoom may be recognized by using the raise hand function found under Participants from Zoom or make a request with the Q and A function. If you're joining only by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. When you're starting your testimony, whether in person or by Zoom, please state your name and address for the record. As in any public hearing, testimony offered must be relevant to the topic at hand. Off color commentary and/or indecent behavior will not be tolerated. The chair reserves the right to end the testimony if anybody who abuses the meeting platform or removes them from the hearing. While all business indicated on the agenda has been completed, the members will vote to adjourn the meeting, singling the end of the meeting and the termination of the ECAT recordings. So first, let's do a roll call. Katam?
Hi.
Kit?
Here.
Zigman?
Here.
And Wolf is here as well. So first order of business, continued public hearing for the special permit 531 Foundry Street. We do have a request for continuance. Till?
Till November.
November 4.
Motion, motion to continue to November 4th for this 531 Foundry Street. Special permit.
Back in, segment.
All right, my vocal Kit?
Aye.
Katam?
Aye.
Zigman?
Aye.
And Wolf is in his eye as well. All right, next up, site plan review, 524 Depot Street, the Easton Public Safety and Public Works facilities.
So the, the presenters are doing it so via Zoom. I know we have Gregory Joint and we have Eric Royce.
Hello, welcome.
Maybe we could have them introduce themselves.
Could you all please introduce yourselves?
Sure, thank you for, for having us. My name's Greg Joint. I'm the architect and project manager for Castle Booze Associates. We are the lead architect on the Public Safety and Public Works project, here to talk to you tonight about 524 Depot Street. With me on the call from our design team is Brian McCusker, who leads the DPW's architecture and engineering team. Eric Royce, who is the landscape architect with Castle Booze. Elena Comter, who is the civil engineer. And then also joining us is Walter Hartley and Chris Urbano with PMA. They are the town's owners' project managers, so a little bit separate from us, but represent the town and their interest in the project.
All right, welcome all. Thank you. Do you have a presentation for us tonight?
We do, and I am sharing. Can you all see it?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. So we have a rather in-depth presentation tonight. I will try to go quickly through it and try to give you the broad overview of the project as well as details that concern planning and zoning. So we'll go through as quickly as possible, but it is a bit intense, so I do apologize in advance for quite a lot of slides. So just quickly, we'll go through the background, the considerations for 524 Depot Street, the site and at hand tonight, alternatives that were considered for the project, the proposed design, and then finally, and with questions and comments. We will again try to keep it brief, but it is a pretty extensive project that's been going on for the course of about two years now. The town is acting through its building committee where we just came from, is replacing both the DPW facility as well as police and fire buildings throughout town. The existing buildings are generally over 50 years old, and this looks to, this project looks to replace and consolidate not only the police and DPW facility, but consolidate the three fire stations into two new facilities. Again, you know, most of these buildings are in the age of 50 to 70 years, so the building stock has really reached its end of useful life, and so the town's looking to replace these buildings in a new facility. I think most people here are involved in town and have seen this project a number of times, including at town meetings, so they're familiar. But I think it's important just to remind ourselves why these buildings are being replaced. They really are quite old, undersized, and just kind of at the end of their useful lives. The team has worked for the past two years with the municipal building committee as well as the departments to kind of hone in on a solution for the next 50 years of Easton's municipal operations. Those options that were considered were many. Ultimately, the building committee selected option 5B, which is really a public safety and public works complex at 524 Depot Street, the subject of tonight's hearing, as well as a new fire substation at 321 Main Street, kind of the corner of the Stonehill property across from Hilliards. That will be the subject of another application at a later date, but really tonight we're here to talk about 524 Depot Street. Many in town know it as the Old Gill property, but you can see here on just the locus, the large locus map, kind of what we're proposing in the overall project. Centralized municipal complex for the majority of town operations, as well as a kind of remote fire substation to cover the north side of town so that the fire response coverage is, is even and well covered, and we can maintain the existing response times from the fire department. For 524 Depot Street, an aerial view of Depot Street, so north is to your left on the screen. This is the Old Gill property. It was formerly a pig farm, and we're, we're looking at a fairly constrained site. So the, the site is in total 152 acres, but we're really looking at a 10 acre parcel. So that red line outlines the 10 acre parcel, and as you can see, there is some wetlands here, and this wetland map that we're showing right now is what's come off a GIS. The wetlands are actually a bit more extensive than that, and we'll get into that a little bit more in future slides on this presentation. But that red line is really the, the project development area under the 10 acre limit that the town kind of created for itself as part of the procurement of this parcel. Some of this parcel was, or the majority of this parcel was procured with CPA funds, but some was, some of the parcel was procured with a general fund allocation at town meeting. So these 10 acres are the developable limit for municipal use on the parcel, and we will be using the majority of those 10 acres for this development. One thing that this project does achieve is some significant trash mitigation on the site existing. There is about 2,500 tons of debris covering an area of about 52,000, 53,000 square feet, fairly significant benefit for the town, being able to go through this, remove this, these items from the site and protect the surrounding area that's reserved for conservation or recreation, really in perpetuity. So you can see here kind of the different areas of the trash and debris scattered throughout the site. It, it ranges from tires and old trailers to old bottles and trash bags and plastic bags from old bread containers and milk bottles and things like that. The, the trash is significant, however, it is relatively confined to these areas. It is all surface waste, so easily disposed of, though it is pretty extensive. These mitigations for the trash do fall within regulated areas, and this project has been proposed to Conservation Commission and is in the process of working its way through, but some of these areas will be restored as wetland or buffer. In the process, some of them get kind of worked into the developed area, but all areas on this side of the site that have trash identified will be cleaned as part of the project. So again, you know, a list of kind of the, the myriad of things that are on the site that we have to deal with, those are part of the project and will be addressed during the construction phase of the project. A little bit of the proposed condition, so a pretty extensive site, starting at Depot Street on the left-hand side of the site. The public war, safety facility is up front with police and fire in a single building. On the back of the site, Public Works is there. Public Works also includes the Fire Department Maintenance Facility, as well as some ancillary structures for storage of both vehicles, Fuel Island and Salt Storage. You can see here, looking over Depot Street, so we're at the north of the site looking to the south, public safety in the front with DPW, that large gray building behind in the back. Public entry will be on the right-hand side, so that right-hand driveline is the public entry with public parking on the west of the site, along with a roadway to get back to DPW. Managing those wetlands, two bridges cross the wetland areas, so there is no permanent wetland impacts on the site, only temporary impacts for construction are, are proposed. In terms of schedule, our anticipated schedule would be to bid, you know, December, January, with mobilization starting in the spring of 2025, clearing and grubbing the site, at least the front portion of the site, starting in summer of 2025. Excavation for bridges, the public safety building and roads would also be in summer of 2025, and then setting the bridges would be in fall of 2025. The bridges will be set, and then we can begin clearing and grubbing of the DPW site, excavation for that DPW foundation in the winter of 2025. The building and the public safety, the public safety building and the public works building will ultimately be in construction simultaneously in, in some fashion, with the project anticipated to be complete by January of 2027. In terms of regulated areas and wetland permitting, they are extensive on this site, no question about it. What you see here are the impacts within the buffer zones. Again, no permanent impacts on the wetlands. There are some temporary impacts on the wetlands to get just across them in order to facilitate the construction, but ultimately, no permanent impacts on the wetlands, though we are developing within some regulated areas. Again, we have submitted to conservation. We've gone through the process for waivers for all of these impacts and are anticipating a closure at the next Conservation Commission hearing. Just a little bit more about the site, we'll get into a couple more details about the proposed construction. This is again, looking over Depot Street, and we're going to talk just a little bit about kind of site circulation. So as I said, the main entry on kind of the bottom here with the yellow arrow for public vehicular circulation, as well as circulation back to the DPW building. Public parking for the public safety building is on the left of that public driveline, as well as the fire staff parking and public, police staff parking would be on the exit and entry across from Cross Street, so kind of on the other side of the public safety building. Primary fire response comes out the front of the building, and secondary fire line response comes out the back of the building and would come out that public safety staff entrance. Public Works is in the back of the site, so that goes across that kind of roadway with bridges on it. And public safety staff parking is in the back, kind of cordoned off for the rest of the site, so only police, fire, and DPW vehicles can be back in that area. I should note, there is a, a large snow storage area kind of in the back of that public parking there, sorry, staff parking there for the snow storage on this site. As we go back towards Public Works, again, come over the, the roadway back, and we're just spinning you around a little bit so you can see the front of the building. Public and staff parking out front in an accessible area. These red dash lines indicate fences and gates controlling access for vehicles during off hours and even during the day. Vehicular operation for the DPW generally circulates counterclockwise around the building, keeping the drive lane clear and easily visible from drivers, so they're always kind of looking on their side of the vehicle and able to see what's going on in the yard. As you circulate, circulate around the building, first is a storage building for public safety. So as, as we worked on the site, we kind of compressed the public safety building to fit within the wetland boundaries and all of the site constraints at the front of the site. We've kind of offset some of the storage and, and long-term use, vehicle storage to the back of the site in a kind of less expensive, less prominent building for storage vehicles and equipment. That's here, along with the Public Works. You come around the site, there is a Fuel Island, a salt storage and material storage area, kind of at the, at the back of the site, and then obviously you come back through, through another set of gates. The large portion of the building is interior vehicle storage. This will keep DPW vehicles interior to the building tempered during the winter, so 50 degrees, so they won't have to idle to warm up during the winter cycles, keeping both noise and pollution down on the site. Just on parking, total parking required based on the bylaw is 126 spots. Given the different uses of the site, particularly at the public safety where we have a public meeting room, so the front portion of the building here is a 75-person meeting room that will serve both as a training facility for the public safety departments, as well as a community meeting room, and a third function of it is emergency operations center. So it's really playing triple duty on that site. So we've kind of added some public parking to make sure we can accommodate all of the shift vehicles, all of the personal vehicles of the staff, as well as public parking on the site simultaneously. In terms of traffic flow, again, looking at that main entry to the site, the project proposes a true traffic signal at this site. Recent revisions in the DP, DOT bylaws allow for a full traffic signalization at this location. This will allow for safe entry in and out of the entry for Public Works, as well as public safety and the public. That would be an actuated light with cameras so that vehicles coming out are, are stopping cross-traffic on Depot Street and able to turn out into the drivelines. On the other side of the site, at the staff entry, this is a preemption light, so this is only to stop flow of traffic on Depot Street during fire emergency operations. So when fire trucks are leaving the station, sequence goes through and fire trucks can exit. There's a, a, a long area of exclusion zone in front of the public safety building to keep traffic flowing out when they're in an event of emergency and stop them from coming into the exclusion zone, so a fire apparatus can turn out quickly and efficiently. There are two bridges on the site. Those bridges are proposed to be precast concrete bridges. They are the kind of longest-lasting, most resilient bridges. They also include a pedestrian walkway. Pretty straightforward, but these span the wetlands, allowing us to have zero permanent wetland impact. Site lighting is a number of different options or, or fixtures proposed to address a number of different conditions around the site. Primarily, the area poles, the first kind of picture there will be the majority of the parking. Some small pedestrian areas will have a little bit less, a little bit smaller fixture, and then the majority of the other fixtures are kind of decorative or wall packs on the building to light up entrances and exits from the building. The canopies have either recessed cans under them at, at most of the buildings, and at the Fuel Island, they have a pretty standard light fixture you would see in a gas station. A couple other minor lights, column lights, just for accents, as well as sign lightage, sign lighting to light up and illuminate the permanent building signs for the complex. In terms of what that results in for photometrics, we have a rendering here of the photometrics for the property. As you can see, it was really important for our team and the town to make sure that we're cutting off our light as, as quickly as possible as we go into those areas of environmental concern with the wetlands. We, we feel like we've done a pretty good job of doing that, making sure we keep safe lighting levels on pavement and parking, as well as pedestrian ways, while cutting it off really quickly and getting that DocSky compliance as you go into the wetland areas. Again, back at DPW, same sort of process. Again, much bigger areas at DPW, given the size of the vehicles and the, and the operations that they have to go under, but again, we're trying to cut off almost immediately as we get to those development lines outside of the, the paved area. A, a little bit about our landscape and, and site improvements that are we're proposing, so pretty typical for public projects. Flagpoles, most of the improvements will be large stone granite bollards or rock as we look to ensure not only the aesthetic value of the project, but the safety, keeping vehicles excluded from getting too close to the building. Project will include bike storage racks, as well as vehicle charging throughout the project, kind of in different locations, with some accessible to the public, some accessible for staff and department vehicles throughout the complex. In terms of landscaping, very minimal landscaping, we're really looking to make sure that this is a low maintenance environment, so a mow strip around most of the areas for, for kind of turf grass, and then it'll turn to more of a, a conservation and wild, a wildflower seed mix. No mulch, mulch up against the building to make sure we're not starting fires with cigarette butts, things like that, keeping these buildings safe. In terms of plantings, all the plantings are proposed to be native species with trees from red maple, magnolia, pine oaks, and, and we think we're going to get some chestnuts as well, it sounds like, from the Conservation Commission. Again, straightforward, low maintenance and native plantings. In terms of stormwater, Elena's on, so when I make a mistake, she will correct me, but really, three or four kind of big areas that we're trying to treat stormwater. The first is bio retention swell, so bio retention swells are really on-surface treatment of water, treatment and storage in the same swell. Subsurface, because of our site constraints, most of our treatment is subsurface, particularly up at public safety. Both subsurface detention and infiltration are proposed. Surface filtration, so the lighter green color, a little area at public safety, but really primarily back in the back at DPW, where we're just going into surface infiltration basins, and then just a really minor area where we're going to some dry wells, so along that kind of corridor that gets you back to the Public Works facility, just catch basins and dry wells to pick up that small area of pavement. So just what those things look like. Water quality structures are throughout. Underground detention will be precast concrete and underground infiltration will likely also be precast concrete, though this slide is showing plastic ones. And just a little bit about the bio retention swell, right? So kind of filtering up the top with vegetation, as well as drainage underneath for overflow, infiltrating what we can on the surface, and then overflowing to those subsurface systems, what, what needs to be for peak storm rates. We did touch on, just briefly, salt storage and Fuel Island, a, a couple things about that we just want to address. All of the town fueling operations and all of the town's salt storage and loading operations. salt storage and loading operations will move to the site back at the DPW. On the site also is a knockdown area, so an area where kind of gross cleaning can happen for trucks coming back after salt operations and things like that, as well as a full truck wash that is inside the DPW building that will clean the trucks and maintain the town's fleet safely and for a long time. The salt storage does include a brine operation, so saltwater solution that is in tanks next to the salt storage shed. If folks are used to seeing now some like lines on the pavement before storms, that is brine, and that's what would be housed here adjacent to the salt storage shed. That area also includes a loading ramp for a little bit safer and easier loading of the trucks. So just a small raised area where the loader can drive up onto instead of lifting all the way up over the bed of the trucks, just provides for a little bit safer operations. And just a little bit what they look like. So you can see here, the salt storage shed is proposed to be a fabric membrane tensile structure, and it has push walls keeping that, you know, salt in even if a loader pushes against it so that it can load, keeping things contained within it, making sure that we keep the surrounding environment safe. The salt is dropped entirely inside the facility. And again, that best practices were raised up a little bit above the surrounding area so that any runoff, you know, goes directly to the stormwater management system and not into the salt storage area. In terms of the fuel island, tanks are all double-walled above-ground tanks, so no buried tanks here. 10-gallon remote fuel box, so no real issues with any minor leaks or things like that. Both tanks are equipped with overflow prevention, so you can't overfill the tank, as well as audible alarms for high level to prevent overfilling. Spill buckets with absorptive materials, pads, brooms, everything you need for spill containment is included in the project and is with the fuel island. And just to some of the more exciting stuff, some renderings of what the front of the building would look like. As we go kind of along Depot Street, seeing the front of the building, as we go west to east along Depot, coming back around into the public parking lot, a large main entry signage on the building. This is really the public entry and face for the public safety building. And back to the Public Works Building, again, public face for Public Works in the back of the site, back in the workyard between, to the right, the storage building for Public Safety and the workshops for Public Works. And just a view, a little bit raised up of the backyard, knockdown station, that stair and platform you see at the end of the building. Right adjacent to it is the truck wash. The large area here is the truck storage, so all the vehicles will be stored inside there. We're actually showing a non-tensile structure salt storage shed, but it will be the tensile as shown before, and the fuel island here. So again, just backing up a broad-picture overview of the site and what it entails. And that was it. So I covered a huge amount of information. We have our team here to answer any questions specific to any part of the project. Happy to address anything the board may have.
All right. Thank you very much for that presentation. That was excellent. Stephanie, I'll start with you.
So just some of my general comments. Throughout the process of pre-permitting, there were several meetings that were held to talk and talk about the direction that the project was going in and receive feedback from the town and the various town departments. And those have been responded to and incorporated. I think, you know, questions about traffic flow, how you're protecting the public when they're entering into the complex from the emergency vehicles that might be exiting. You saw demonstrated here, there's complete separation. And they discussed how the traffic signaling will operate just for the general flow of traffic into and out of the facility and along Depot Street as well as when the emergency vehicles are leaving. A couple of questions that I have. It's kind of early in the process. I mean, this is a very big project, and I'm sure the Conservation Commission talked about this, but during construction, just staging locations and how that's all going to be managed, the project has been completely reviewed for stormwater management through the Conservation Commission NOI process, the notice of intent process. They are expecting to issue the certificate of compliance and vote for the conditions that would be part of that certificate, I said certificate of compliance, order of conditions at their meeting on Monday, the Conservation Commission's meeting on Monday. So that will have been addressed. The board will not need to wait for that. And that includes construction period stormwater pollution prevention plans to make sure that there is no migration of sediment and no erosion during that process and as well as post-construction. One of the questions I have is on the timing of the waste removal, when that, what part of the project that will be done? And will there be containers in a fill-and-go environment? Will materials be stored on-site during that process? Is that going to be done during part of the construction?
So Stephanie, we'll address the question as best as possible. In public construction, contractors' means and methods are often deferred to them, and I would recommend that they are as well here. That being said, we do prescribe that the material must be taken off according to all, you know, state and federal requirements, that it be segregated and disposed of properly from other construction waste, because construction waste in Massachusetts has to be disposed of kind of separately. In addition, there are areas that are in the, both regulated area and within the wetlands. In those areas, we are prescribing the way that that waste gets removed. And we referred to it quickly on the slide. Some areas, particularly those in the wetlands, are generally kind of larger debris, chairs, barrels, things of that nature that can likely be taken out by hand. You know, raked clean, seated as necessary, but really with no disturbance. So that will be prescribed in the construction documents, making sure that, you know, we're being as light as possible on the impacts to those areas. The area of bottles is going to require equipment to move the bottles, the kind of debris that's kind of worked its way into the soil, and really removal of about a foot of soil and debris out of that area. And those areas will need, you know, loom and seed to be restored in that area. So we would expect that those would be during the course of construction as the contractor sees fit, but that they have to get access to those areas as well as permission to work within the National Grid easement. So it's a little bit complex in terms of timeframe, but it will be over the course of construction, not prior to. It will be just in the contract documents for removal and part of the overall construction package. Does that address the question?
Yes. And then I just have one other question. If you could go back to one of the views, overviews of the plans, there is an area of paved, a paved area. It kind of looks like a turnout heading, it's on the east side of the plans, and I believe it's the public safety buildings portion of the site. If you could explain what that turnout is for.
He says snow storage.
Oh, did you, was that, okay. I missed, I missed that. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. So this area here, Stephanie?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. So that's extended for snow storage. There is a area, a fenced area there for police impound vehicles. So if, you know, there's a vehicle that police have to have towed in there, it's over there. But most of that area is really the snow storage area to accommodate the capacity required in the bylaw.
And, Madam Chair, what if we have a storm or several storms over a period of time? And do you anticipate that you could exceed the limits of the capacity for that area to hold snow?
No, I think we...
Is it related?
That's up to the Madam Chair.
Yeah, feel free.
So there is, I will assume there is a drainage design. It will be a peer review for the 100-years water design that needs to be. Will it be a peer review so we know that this work and the all conditions for drainage?
Well, it was reviewed for the drainage, but if you could... So did, did you hear what Mr. Kedham said, and could you respond?
So in terms of peer review, the peer review has been completed through the Conservation Commission.
Well, I think the confirming is that there is drainage in the snow storage area so that as the snow melts, it will be...
In all our projects, we do peer review with the company.
Oh, they did, they fully...
Better.
Yes, they did fully review.
So that was my question. Was that done?
Yes.
And if that was done, is the 100-years included in it? That's, it should be, right?
Yes, it was. And Stephanie, yes, the pavement is contiguous with the rest of the parking and has the same stormwater system. You know, it's tied into the same stormwater management system. It is pavement. That's all contiguous with the parking area. So everything goes through and is treated through our stormwater management system. All that is calculated in to the stormwater report that has been gone through with Conservation in their peer review process.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Board members, I'm going to open it up. I actually have one question before I open it up to everyone else. Can we just stay on that slide for a second? This may be a real basic one, but is there a sidewalk connecting? Is that what I see kind of on the bridge? Is that a sidewalk between the two buildings? Or is there a thought for pedestrians kind of who want to walk between the two buildings?
Yes, there is a sidewalk included connecting the two buildings also across the bridges. So two drivelanes on the bridges as well as a five-foot sidewalk connecting kind of both places. You know, the thought is, you know, we do have a very popular fire department that throws a good open house every year. So overflow parking during those times could be back at DPW with pedestrian access back up through the site so that, you know, you really do have the ability to use the site for pretty much any condition that the town would like to use it for.
Excellent. Thank you. Other board members?
Amos?
Yeah. There was any thought on the design of this building to make them more energy-efficient? Is one question. And the second one is, I see a lot of roof. What brings me up to the question is, is solar photovoltaic use or implemented on those roofs in order to facilitate, you know, energy efficiency and alternative sources for energy?
So let me, Madam Chair, through you, address it in kind of two parts. First, energy efficiency. These buildings are proposed to be all-electric buildings. They are compliant with the new stretch code recently implemented in the site. They will be comparatively efficient buildings to every other building in town. In addition, the town and acting through its building committee has selected a HVAC system that includes geothermal, so ground source heat pumps for those of us nerds. That system is among the most efficient and the most sustainable systems available currently with current technology. That system is included with a heat pump system, so similar to an air-source heat pump. Mini splits is usually what people know. Refrigerant inside the building, water into the ground outside of the building, those ground source heat loops are closed, so it's a completely closed system. No taking of groundwater or pushing water back into the ground. They're completely closed in a number of pipes in wells about 500 feet deep in this site. To just shift a little bit, because they are all-electric buildings, energy usage is an important question with electricity tending to be a little bit more expensive than gas. These buildings are set up to receive solar, though solar is not part of the construction project at large. The reason for that is Easton has kind of already started a process where their solar facilities are typically done through a purchase power agreement. So where a third-party vendor owns the asset, the solar panels, the inverters, all of that stuff, and the town agrees to buy energy from them at a set rate over a duration of time. That's what the landfill has. That's what other municipal buildings have. That's what Blanche Ames has set up to be. These buildings are set up exactly like that. These have large roof areas, as you know. They have been oriented in a way that kind of facilitates solar panels, particularly facing pretty much due south with large roof areas. DPW roof, no accident, has a very large, flat-ish roof facing pretty much due south at a 3-degree angle, perfect for solar. So set up to go. The electrical systems are set up to receive that. That's all there and ready for, ready for the town to really pursue that purchase power agreement as part of a kind of third-party agreement. Hopefully, that addresses the questions.
Yeah. I have a final question is signaling on the pavement and signs for traffic to facilitate safety on these sites. Usually, we see them on the drawings. I haven't seen anything like that on your design and your drawings. Are you intending to add that to the drawings?
Yeah. So the traffic drawings, I believe, do have that in a number of places, particularly at the roadway. Internal to the site, yes, there will be some directional arrows, pavement markings for center line of the road, things like that are there.
Yeah, I was looking for that.
All right. Thank you, Amos. Kathy, two in?
Yeah, I've got just one question. Is that in the DPW side of the site, is that at the top a trailhead for, for public use? Or is that something else?
So I apologize. This rendering is a little bit old. In conversations with the DPW and the Conservation Commission, the trailhead that was originally proposed back here has been taken out here, and they are proposing to relocate it on the other side of the power line easement where there's an existing curb cut just to keep, keep it a little bit more accessible for the public being out at Depot Street, as well as just kind of keeping it out of the power line easement directly. There are some sensitive areas for wetland right near there. So there are two vernal pools that that kind of area went through. So just keeping people out of those areas was of interest. So we've since moved that out of there, and DPW will be providing that separate from the project.
Okay. So on this site, so just to be clear, on this site that we're looking at, there's no public trail access? It's going to be on a totally different site?
It is still part of the same parcel. It's just on the other side of the power line easement. So sorry, let me just, so... line easement, so, sorry, let me just, um, so, uh, our parcel's here, right, this is the power line easement, right on the other side of the power line easement, there's a, a curb cut, a break in the stone wall, uh, and, and really where Mr. Gill used to, used to live, um, that's where the new trailhead is proposed, it's just a little bit cleaner, uh, a little bit more accessible for the public, uh, so they don't have to go kind of all the way back to DPW in order to access the trails, um, and it, it ties into the existing trail network there.
Great, thank you.
I mean, I guess, just to tag on to what Joanne asked, is that there are trails back behind where the DPW building is being put in? Are those, is, was there no discussion to tie, try to tie into those trails, coming off the DPW building?
Um, again, most of the, uh, trails back in the DPW are, are, are pretty minor, and they also typically go through, uh, some pretty sensitive, um, wetland areas, uh, so, uh, that really wasn't considered to be tied in necessarily to, uh, the, the proposal. Uh, that said, uh, you know, we're not going and removing trails, uh, so, uh, there, there are probably trails that'll likely end in the DPW. Uh, the DPW will be fenced to make sure that the, the site remains secure, uh, and, and, you know, in the evenings and things like that, given the, uh, amount of, of equipment that's back there, uh, and kind of the remote nature of the site.
Alright, um, do we have, um, any members of the public, uh, Joanne, or anyone here wishing to comment? Okay. Um, so, do we need a vote?
If the board's ready, the board can vote.
Alright, do I have a motion?
What, what are we voting for?
To approve the site plan.
Motion to approve the site plan, Kevin.
Second, kid.
Alright, um, we'll do this, uh, Kid?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Zigman?
Aye.
And Wolfson and I as well. Uh, thank you very much, um, thank you for that excellent presentation. The elevation was very helpful.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time and input on this important project for the town.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Bye.
Alright, moving on, we've got, uh, 612 Washington Street, um, is there anyone, alright? Thank you for your patience. Uh, if you would mind introducing yourself, stating your name, introducing yourself?
Sure. Greg Driscoll of JDE Civil here tonight representing Godfrey Auto, also here tonight is, uh, Jamie from Godfrey Auto, and Jason. Um, so, the plan's gonna be up on the screen, or should I have him on the easel as well, to put them up?
You'll need to present them.
Okay. Alright, so? So, the, uh, the Godfrey family, owners of Godfrey Auto, are looking to, uh, expand their auto repair business on their existing property at 612 Washington Street. Uh, currently, their building is located here, and they have, uh, three service bays in the building. Um, their business is growing and expanding, and they want to stay in Easton, uh, so, what we're proposing to do is take down the building and replace it with a larger building on the property, uh, with four service bays along here and a longer bay in the back, that will also store their, um, their tow truck, their flatbed tow truck that they have. So, the site is zoned, um, the requisite commercial districts, and located in the, um, commercial sub district B, uh, the, the use is allowed in the zone, um, as stated on the staff report, uh, the locus, so the site is located on the easterly side of Washington Street, uh, next to the Dunkin' Donuts, uh, surrounded by commercial properties to the north, to east, north, um, and west, and residential properties to the south. Site is accessed by an existing curb cut, oh, no, to Washington Street Route 138, um, we're not looking to modify the curb cut at all, so it won't be permitting through, um, MassDOT for that. Uh, it's a two-way access currently, and we'll be maintaining two-way access into the site, uh, for parking. Um, per the bylaw, required to have six spaces, I believe? Yeah, kind of have six spaces, we're proposing nine, including an accessible space, um, an area in the back for, um, vehicles that are being worked on. So, uh, the, the existing small retaining well over here, entering the site, will be removed in order to provide better access to the proposed parking. Uh, the traffic flow pattern here is for, is laid out so that the, uh, their flatbed truck can get to the back of the site and park back in this area here, or pull into that rear garage door. So, the site is, uh, is an existing non-reforming property, and we have already been to ZPA, uh, and gotten, and we have a variance for the side setback. Uh, the existing side setback is like 5.3 feet, and we're proposing six feet, so we're gonna prove it slightly. So, site utilities, um, we're gonna be connecting it to sewer, we'll be filing with, um, DPW soon for that, and we're showing a water connection through here, we've already received feedback that, uh, DPW doesn't want that to go through the stormwater basin, so we'll be realigning that out to be 12 feet or so off the proposed, uh, sewer line, and going right out through the entrance, so we have a new connection for that. Um, drainage, uh, the site currently has no drainage infrastructure, um, we are proposing to capture the roof runoff and direct it into a small basin at the front here, uh, so we're improving, um, green space in the site by removing some impervious area here. We're also removing, um, paved area with more roof area on the site, overall, the same, uh, the impervious area for the site is being reduced slightly. Um, and that's the overview of the project. Um, and we did receive some comments, uh, when I say anything as well, this, as I said, the site is mostly paved, we'll be, we'll be conceding the limited areas that we have and adding some plantings around the front, new green space. Um, so, that's the overview of the project, and we did receive some comments from, from staff and some of the reports.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Stephanie?
Okay, so, my primary comment, um, the narrative indicated that this was a redevelopment project, it was also disturbance, um, or on a parcel less than an acre, and wasn't subject to stormwater management, um, complying with the state's Stormwater Management Handbook. But, that is not what the town's bylaw indicates. Um, the, I believe this is subject to stormwater management review, and it is a redevelopment project, so there are standards that need to be complied to, to the maximum extent possible, and then standards that just need to be complied with. So, they need to provide evidence of that, I have asked to have, um, the stormwater management that is proposed, um, to be peer reviewed, but the stormwater checklist as part of the stormwater management guidelines needs to be submitted, as well as a st- stormwater, um, pollution prevention plan and then operations and maintenance plan. A couple of other, I, I think that the traffic flow in and out of the site, um, makes sense, it works for the use. There, uh, do appear to be some opportunities, um, basically, the site is, as Mr. Driscoll pointed out, it is completely disturbed, um, pretty much, and it is substantially paved. The plans show areas that are hashed, you can, you can see them easily from here, they're triangular shaped, um, and then there appear to be some areas around the building, they do show a very small planting area, and they show the green area where they are proposing a grass strip, and I believe that the retention basin is going to be, um, grassed, is that?
Yep.
But I think there's opportunity for additional plantings to provide a little bit of a buffer to the abutting properties, which are also very commercial and, and fully developed, but also to provide some visual relief from the hardscape at the site. I mean, it, it really is a, um, very heavily paved area and commercial, so I think that there's an opportunity there to make it more visually, uh, appealing to the area. This is a district that the town has invested money in through sewer-ing the district to try to promote some additional development and new development and redevelopment. Um, you know, they're looking to increase their business here, that's a good thing, but, um, also to, um, with the zoning, and we've had a lot of conversations with MassDOT about roadway improvements and sidewalk improvements that will make this more attractive for people to go to and visit and, you know, do business in the community, so I think, and taking an opportunity just to, um, help beautify a little bit, um, would help the area. The, one of the things I noted was that the parking lot is striped for 18 parking spaces, but I had to count those out myself, a, a ta- a parking table, I didn't see a parking table provided, was it?
It's, it's mass.
Okay, I, I-
Uh, we didn't get these plans, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know why they weren't in the binder, I thought I had put them all in the binder. So, that, those are my general comments.
Okay. Um, so, looking at, uh, chapter 501, subdivision rules and regs, uh, stormwater management, under 501, dash 33, section A2, um, says, stormwater management standards shall not apply to, and it includes applications for site plan approval where no new impervious areas to be added, that's, we have that here, we're actually reducing impervious area and applications for site plan approval that result in fewer than 10 parking spaces, and we have nine on the site, so, um, those are the exemptions that I was-
But I think it also says, including but not, not limited to that review, and a, and again, I think the nature of the project warrants, and I, and I don't, I'm, they're providing stormwater management components, so why it would be difficult to complete the check, stormwater checklist and provide that information.
Okay, we can provide that.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, other board mem- other board members, any comments or questions?
Is there, is there a planned, um, buffer between the property and the butter, besides the current chain link fence?
The building itself will pretty much be the buffer, um, so as you can see, there's gonna be no windows on the side, right? And, you know, all the doors or anything will be facing towards the other commercial property, so I know these are, uh, residential properties over here, so the building itself will buffer the, um, between the two uses. Um, but, you know, along here, this is the existing, uh, green space that's, that's there, and, uh, we are moving the building slightly further away than the existing building, even though we are expanding, you know, the building down this way.
Madam Chair, could I just comment on, on the comment about the buffer? Uh, this site is already built out to, again, to the property line, but a building is not considered a buffer under the subdivision rules and regulations and zoning. A buffer is an area set back and that provides either vegetation or fencing as.
There would be fencing, the fencing existing, that would, that would be maintained in, we're actually friendly with the neighbors, the landlords of the properties beside us that are on us, but we'll give them choice of what they want, right now it's chain link, if they prefer vinyl.
Sorry, Chair, can the person speak in a microphone? We can't really hear anything.
Oh, yes.
Oh, sorry, yeah, if you would mind for a moment, just taking the mic and just introducing yourself, again, that's okay.
How about that, is that good? Can you hear me now?
Perfect, thank you, yeah, perfect.
Uh, there's an existing chain link fence between the neighbors, stockade, uh, wooden stockade to the rear neighbors, um, but we would actually give, uh, residential neighbors, their multifamily homes, we'd actually give them choice if they wanted a chain link with a, uh-
Privacy slats?
Vinyl slats.
Privacy slats, if they would want vinyl, um, a solid vinyl, um, we'd, that's what we'd do, to ma- to maintain that. Uh, and then our other three sides are already, um, there are shared fence between VHS's neighbor, that, another butter, uh, but that would be maintained, and we have to maintain that anyways for, we do police towing for Easton Police, so we have to maintain a secured lot with the buffer or whichever it might be, doesn't have to be chain link, it can be vinyl as long as it's secure.
And Madam, Madam Chair, if he could identify himself.
Oh, sorry, could you-
Oh, James Godfrey, owner of Godfrey Auto.
Thank you.
I'll sit.
Alright, uh, any other comments for the board? Alright, um, Mr. Driscoll, do you wanna kind of take these comments and, um-
Yes.
Return?
Yep, yep, we'll, uh, continue to the next meeting, and we'll address comments. Um, so, before, so you said it's gonna be a review? Okay, so, who's gonna do that?
Um, I, I don't know at this moment, I-
Okay. So, um, do you like, I prefer to submit the revisions, including, um, the stormwater report and, uh, checklist that you're asking for, before they send them, so they have everything?
Yeah, I, I think we're going to have beta review this one.
Alright, thank you very much, your, for your time, Mr. Driscoll.
The, and, Madam Chair?
Yep.
Um, one of the items on the agenda, so, we, the next meeting is on the 17th, and we have some-
Flexibility there?
Yes, it's, we're, we're going to be reviewing the stormwater management bylaw, but we have some flexibility. Then, the next scheduled meeting after that is 10:21, but that will be three consec- actually, four consecutive meetings. So, um, I had suggested to Bob, um, that I bring up to the meeting tonight, that we might cancel that, and that, then the next meeting after that is November 4th. So, it would either be the 17th or the November 4th.
Which would be-
If the board votes to-
All in favor of if there are not extra meetings needed, not meeting to meet. Uh, Mr. Driscoll, do you have, uh, do you wanna contact Stephanie for, um, one?
Yeah, I think, um, 17th is pretty close for us to-
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
So, I think, um, you have the 21st, yeah, or the-
Or the 4th, November 4th?
Yeah.
Alright, alright, we will see you then, do we need a motion to continue, please? Alright, we have a motion to continue?
Motion to continue the site plan review for 612 Washington Street until November 4th.
Zigman, second?
Alright, um, board members-
Madam Chair, were there any other members of the public that wanted? Madam Chair, were there any other members of the public that wanted?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any other, I forgot to ask if there are any members of the public who wanted to speak on this. That was, anybody else on this? Nope? Okay. All right. We'll continue with the vote. Sigmat.
Hi. Sorry, I'm too slow.
Kid.
Hi.
All right. Wolf is an eye as well. We're all set. We'll see you back on the floor.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing that needs to be read in. 154 Elm Street. Ms. Kidd, if you would do the honors?
In accordance with the provisions of chapter 41, section 81T MGL, the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, at 6:30 PM to be held in the Colleen Corona Room, Eastern Town Hall, 136 Elm Street, remotely via Zoom on the application received from Norton Land Company LLC for a definitive subdivision for the creation of a four lot subdivision at 154 Elm Street to be known as Thayer Estates, assessors map 12U Lot 21 and map 8U Lot 6D. The meeting link will be contained within the posted agenda for at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting. A copy of that application and plan may be viewed on the town website. This notice is also available at www.maspublynotices.org.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
You're welcome.
Do we have anyone for the Thayer Estates here? All right. Thank you very much. You wouldn't mind introducing yourself?
I'd be happy to. My name, my name is Bob Forbes from Zenith Consulting Engineers. I think there's some people here to, is it okay if I set up over here so they could see the board? Like, we couldn't see the board where this gentleman had it set up.
Is Joey able to see it?
Did I put it in that corner? I think maybe you guys can see it.
The cameras are over here.
Yeah, the problem is the camera's there, so we have a board member who's.
I should, is it all impermeable, Stephanie?
Pardon?
Is it all impermeable?
The plan was in the binder, and it's available on permeable.
Yeah, so I've got access. That's okay.
Actually, no, you can move over here. She's got, she's got it pulled up on her computer, so we're all good.
We might be okay, because we moved over here, so let's try this.
We can share it.
If it doesn't work, let me know. If you guys can't see it.
Well, we, you have it? We can share it. I know, we can share. Everyone can see it.
I think, I think we are good. I think we have resolved it.
Oh, we can deal with two Jones.
Now she gets two votes.
Right back in the fireplace.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a presentation for us today?
Yes, I do. So this project is named Thayer Estates. Location is at, this is current existing single family house at 154 Elm Street. This is the existing condition plan I have up here. So this is the frontage on the property at Elm Street, and this is the existing single family house with the driveway, and there's a pool in the backyard now. There are wetlands on it, so eventually this existing house is proposed to be raised and replaced with that subdivision project. There are existing wetlands that kind of come right through the middle of the site. This blue line that I've highlighted here is the, is an intermittent stream. This circular area here is a potential vernal pool that we're treating as an existing vernal pool, and the green line is bordering vegetated wetlands. So we have, like I said, we have this wetland system that kind of comes through the middle of our site. We have upland back here, and we have upland down this portion of the property. As far as where we're located, we're probably right about here right now, where I'm pointing the highlighter, and this is right next door. This is residential property next door in the front, how you know? And another one on this side, and there are some other surrounding residences around the back area. What's proposed? So what we're proposing is a four lot conventional residential subdivision. The access, again, is coming off Elm Street, small cul-de-sac roadway. It's going to, it's above 450 feet long, a little less than 450 feet long, and that's just to provide safe access, turnaround for emergency vehicles and frontage as required by the Eastern bylaws for, for the four lots. It's a 40-foot, proposed 40-foot wide right-of-way. It's proposed to be serviced by municipal, municipal water, I'm sorry, and individual septic systems on each lot. What we're proposing is 20-foot of pavement width with 12-inch Cape Cod berms on each side. The cul-de-sac has a 94-foot diameter, paved diameter turnaround, and again, that's in excess of what you're, what's required in the regulations, but we feel this is a safer turnaround for emergency vehicles. It's consistent with other towns that where we've had provided paved turnarounds for, for emergency vehicles in other towns. As far as the stormwater management goes, we have, so this is the north hour. This is north in this direction. We have, right now, the existing conditions, the, all of the, the slope of the land and all of the stormwater runoff travel from this side through the site to this side. Right now, there are two, I guess, low spots where you, where water would come through from here through this property and two here, and one is right up here on the front of this property. The other is back here, right here, where I'm highlighting. And that's all spelled out in the stormwater management report that we've submitted. What we've done to mitigate the runoff, we have two infiltration areas proposed. So like I said, we have a pretty good component of flow coming overland from wooded area here, and we're capturing that and infiltrating is, small storms are gonna be fully infiltrated in this. Larger storms will overflow from this infiltration area into this larger one up here. And what we've done is this roadway system intercepts the runoff that flows towards this property. So there's no runoff, so we've taken the existing component that flows onto your property, and we've, we've taken it and we're bringing it all back into the proposed infiltration basin that's back here. So the existing runoff, as it's spelled out, becomes zero in post-development at this property line. We had, this, this infiltration basin is sized to collect and infiltrate in excess of the 10-year design storm, very large storms like the 100-year design storm. We have an overflow spillway where a very small portion of runoff is gonna flow out to the same low spot that if, there's an existing flow now, and we've reduced it significantly for, and the post-development runoff rate is significantly reduced at this spot. So we had runoff here and here, and now we're only proposing runoff here, and it's at a reduced rate. So you'll also notice that we've pushed all of the development up towards the front of the property, and that's in an effort to, number one, stay away from the sensitive wetland areas, but also to provide open space. So this is all, nothing's proposed to be done back here. There is an existing root cellar here, and to be honest, I'm not familiar with what, with what that is. I grew up in the city, so you guys may be able to.
Oh, the electric. They can play the guitar and put all the electric in here.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that's there. We're preserving that, and there's an existing gravel road that, that extends from the existing house through the wetlands to that spot, so we're trying to keep all that. I'm not sure if somebody in town is gonna consider that a historic resource or whatever they consider, but we're trying to preserve that, and we're trying to preserve the access to it from the same location without having to do any, without having to improve anything, cut down any trees, leave that all alone. So essentially, from, from this line back, nothing's going to be touched. Nothing's proposed to be touched. And I think that's pretty much it. If you, oh, so as far as permitting goes, we have, we're in front of you, obviously, for the subdivision approval. We've submitted to, we have, we're working with LEC Environmental, and they've submitted a notice of intent to the Conservation Commission. We were supposed to be on the Conservation Commission meeting last night, but it was not advertised properly. It wasn't advertised with 48 hours advance notice, so they had to cancel the meeting. So we're gonna be in front of them next Tuesday, I believe, so that'll be our initial hearing with them. And then that's pretty much it. We're obviously gonna have to get an MPDES permit, and the stormwater pollution prevention plan will have to be put together along with that. And that's pretty much it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Stephanie, any comments?
So I just have a few. The, the first is, is this, so you're seeking waivers of the roadway standards? And generally, when the town does that, it's intended to take, for the road to be a private way?
Yes.
Okay. So that's good. And then you're showing four streetlights, and you show the typical luminaire. It does not indicate if the lights are dark sky friendly or not?
Well, they are, but we'll revise the plans to make sure that's.
And generally, the board likes to see a photometric plan along with that. And those, those were my primary, the project is being peer reviewed, and we did receive comments from the reviewing engineer today, which of course, you know, the applicant did not have time to respond to. And then I, I appreciate that you're considering keeping the root cellar. That was brought to my attention.
Absolutely.
And I mentioned it to our community planner, who is the liaison to the Historical Commission. He said, that's, that's really nice.
We figured somebody would be interested in preserving.
Yeah, so.
That was gonna be my question, because I see the Historical Commission, which actually has said on as well, but that they're recommending preserving the wall, but also has the root cellar just been kind of brought to their attentions, and they can just kind of mark it as an area of interest?
Yeah. Yeah. So where, like I said.
So, yeah.
If you wouldn't mind just coming to the mic and identifying yourself. You're welcome to talk. It's just so that we have a member sitting at home.
Alan Dronis, I'm the applicant. So which wall are you talking about preserving?
So it is a historic stone estate wall along Elm Street, be retained to the greatest extent practicable.
The only thing we're gonna do is change the openings. We'll, we'll take this opening, and, you know, whatever we take out of this, we'll use it to restore the existing opening. So we absolutely don't want those stone walls going. Anyway, there's another, very nice wall here. Yeah. No, that's, that's the character of the property, obviously.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
Other members?
Would it make sense to think about how we access to that? It's not that, that relevant, whatever that is. Because easement, there is no easement. You need to walk through a property in order to.
Correct.
To reach that.
I mean, that would be some, I mean, it.
Because now, now you are asking for an easement. Complicated, tremendous.
Right. I don't think that's, that wasn't what was being asked, and I.
So they are not asking for it, so I will assume it's not relevant. Okay.
The only thing that's happened on other projects of this type where we have a feature like that, it does create a liability issue insurance-wise for the, for that property owner if there's public coming across the property to access something like that.
So I'm thinking about the other owners there. There is an open space, and they wanna use it, they really need the way to get to it. They can't on the corner.
Yeah, it's, it's supposed to be passive. I don't, I guess the best, my best advice for those other homeowners would be become friendly with the people on Lot 3.
Yeah, well, I will assume, or you can plan a small easement just to walk through in between properties, but I don't know what that means. It's complicated.
I mean, certainly someone could donate. We, we have a resident in town who donated an easement to provide a trail connection from the.
I think I know that one.
Flyaway Pond.
I walk it through.
Probably, yes, a lot of people do.
I walk through that one.
Yes. But that, yeah, there aren't mitigating circumstances here.
I will not, I will not condition this approval to that. It will be nice if you guys can think about it.
I think Mr. Dronis would consider giving that option to the people who buy the property. It's gonna be completely up to them. Unfortunately, if it was located differently, we could consider it, but walking virtually in someone's back, yeah. You'd literally be walking through their backyard, close to their house.
Unless you create an easement in between the two properties.
No, but the easement, I, we could create the easement, but it's just the foot traffic or, you know, it becomes an issue of where are they parking their vehicle? Then you've got foot traffic going next to someone's house. It's just.
I'm just saying.
I respect what you're saying, and if it was in a different setting, I couldn't agree with you more, but I guess for whatever it's worth, at least we are preserving it and want it to stay, stay what it is, and it is in good shape. It's not, it's not that it's falling apart.
Maybe, maybe there'll be a family with children who actually go out in the woods and discover this root cellar and think it's the coolest thing that they've ever seen.
And it is. And, you know, the, the previous homeowner did put a fence at the entrance of it because it, you know, because of the liability, just for what you just said, but it's still, you know, you still have the domes that are on the top, and, you know, it's, it's cool. I mean, so anyways, but that's, that's what we got.
Chair, if I may, I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Yeah. So my, my first thought is, I see on the plan that there's a treehouse encroachment. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah. Apparently, so when the surveyors did the survey on the property, they located a treehouse in the back of the property, and that's, just to let everybody know, that's back here. I don't know who constructed the treehouse, but they did not construct it on their own property. I believe it's a treehouse for this house here. They've gone way over their property line with that. So it's not something that the homeowners here were aware of, and that's why it says it's an encroach, where somebody encroached on the property and built a treehouse.
And will it be left or will it be removed?
Right, right now, we're not planning on doing anything with it, so it's probably gonna, probably the best thing to do would be to leave that alone for now, rather than get construction and equipment in there to take it down and legal issues.
Yeah. You disturb the, the wetlands and all that.
That's exactly right.
Leave it alone.
It's a heavily wooded site back there, and just to get a piece of equipment back there would be, make a mess, so we prefer not to do that.
Ask your neighbor to take it down.
Yeah. If the board requires it or Conservation Commission, I doubt they will, because it's outside their jurisdiction, but right, for right now, it's gonna stay put, and hopefully kids are enjoying it.
And the stone wall along the northern, just north of that as well, too, that will just stay put as well?
Yes. Yes. Everything on the north side of the wetland system is gonna remain untouched.
Great. And my last question, Stephanie, this might be directed more towards you and how the Conservation Commission works in town, but vernal pools are such an important resource, and I'm wondering, does the Conservation Commission ask that any sorts of like signs or flags be installed at any of these boundaries, just so that new homeowners are kind of aware of what's there, or is that just not required?
The Conservation Commission does require boundaries at the limit of the wetland resource area.
Exactly.
And in fact, they provide the boundary markers.
They've actually already commented to us that they wanted. They've actually already commented to us that they wanted us to provide more of them. So in the revised set of plans that you guys eventually see, you'll see more of those conservation signs. So it's an excellent question and yes, we are providing that.
Great. And my only other thing is that that, and this is just kind of a little bit of a pet peeve of mine, but it seems like an awfully large paved roundabout. Is it, is it typical of Easton subdivision, Stephanie? Or is it actually larger? Could it be shrunk or could there at least be like a planting island in the middle of it?
So if you could just, what is the width of the road? I had that in my comments that I didn't see.
It's wider than usual.
Yeah, so we would be happy to reduce that, the paved area in the cul-de-sac. We'd be happy to do that with the approval of this board. But also the approval of the fire chief.
Fire department.
It's all about the, that paved turnaround is about emergency access to those lots. And more, it's not access to the lots, it's being able to get the emergency vehicle out of there. Now, I grew up in Randolph and I grew up in a cul-de-sac and it was like 60-foot wide cul-de-paved cul-de-sac. This is 90. So we were, they always were able to come down our street and take care of us. So it can be done, but it has to be, I think it behooves us to get approval from the fire chief first.
Yeah, fire engines got a little bigger.
Yeah, absolutely. They sure have. Yeah. And like I said, that's sized for most of the other towns that we're doing subdivisions in now with cul-de-sacs. That's sized to accommodate a larger emergency vehicle. So like I said, with this board's approval and with the fire chief's approval, we'd be happy to reduce the size of that.
And I think when you talk to the fire department, and what they'll do is they'll provide you with a template for the.
Exactly.
Type of truck that would go out there. But let them know that, and it helps to talk to the chief because he is sympathetic to trying to reduce as much as possible while at the same time, of course, being assured that his vehicles will be able to perform.
Understood. That's why we always defer to the fire chief on any project, residential, commercial, whatever the chief wants, that's what we give him.
I see sidewalks here?
We are not proposing a sidewalk. Again, there's room to accommodate a sidewalk if this board asks us to do it. It's such a small subdivision, we didn't think it was necessary. But again, we provided the grading and there's a spot for it right here. But we were asking for a waiver on that just because of the size of the subdivision.
Question, please.
Sir, just one moment because the board's going to finish, so I'll open it up to public comments. Okay? Board members, does anybody else have anything else, any more comments or questions before I open up to the public?
Just, sorry, Mickey, I just have one more.
Sure.
I was wondering if I could just talk a little bit about, so to the north, 148-150, I think is the parcel. I think that's a house there.
It is, yes.
Yeah, can you just talk a little bit about like what's going to happen on that property line? In terms of kind of buffering that road from that resident above?
We, so the, as you can see, the roadway is close to that property line. But we can absolutely provide some vegetated buffer in there if the board would like us to. And it probably makes sense to do that. So we'd be happy to do that. I can put something together on the revised plans. I'll put something together on that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Actually, I do have another question following up on Joanne's. How many trees are you going to have to take down to put that private way in?
Tree, so most of this is a lawn area. There's probably, I can't, I don't know the exact number, but I can tell.
It seems like there's a good number of trees where the drive is, the private ways go.
16.
16.
Eight of them will be taken down to build the road.
To build the roadway.
Yeah, so like I said, we'll propose something to vegetate that area between the road and the body.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
All right, board members, any more comments before I open it up to the public? All right, members of the public, if you want to come up, please walk to the microphone or we can get the microphone to you if you'll state your name. Sir, I need you to say, you gotta say your name.
Very good.
Can you just point out with.
Sir, before you ask your question, could you please just go to the mic and just your name and address, please?
My name is Eugene Colaua. I live at 150 Elm Street.
All right, thank you.
150 148.
That's his property.
I just kind of would like to know where the new houses are going in the front.
Oh, here you go. So these, so here's the roadway. Here's your house.
Yep.
Here's the roadway. There's one house. There's two houses. There's three houses. There's four houses.
So the roadway would be alongside our driveway?
Yes. Yeah, here's your driveway right here.
And the electrical work is going to be underground or?
That's going to be a function of whatever this board requires or whatever the local electric company is. It all going to be underground?
All the wires are not yet, so those are all coming out. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? Wanted comment? Is there anyone online?
In fact, if you'd like specific vegetation planted, we'd be happy to try to accommodate you if there's specific plants you'd like along that property line.
I'm going to throw it out real quick. That's usually does the native.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's what I would put there.
Well, that's what's required.
Yeah, we were going to, I would suggest something like a Leyland Cypress. It's going to be an evergreen tree that's going to provide a visual buffer for you.
I'm going to defer to Stephanie. She's pretty good about writing comment on the native species.
They need to be native species.
You can tell me what you want.
I don't tell people what we want, but they need to be native species. The USDA database, plant database, is a good resource for determining whether, you can check to see if a plant is native.
True native species.
True native, yes, true native species, not varietals.
Are you ready for me?
Yeah. Hi.
Hi.
If you wouldn't mind.
This is Sandeep Gupta.
Please, thank you.
Yep, this is Sandeep Gupta. I'm at 16 Stonemore Drive. I apologize, I'm not going to go on video because I'm in downtown Boston on a road. But I abut the property and I guess I have one comment and one feedback. So the comment is, I believe there was some commentary about the treehouse being on the property. We would contest the drawing of the back line. We also had a survey done, actually the prior owner to ours on 16 Stonemore, had a survey done. We actually had the invisible fence installed that runs up to that treehouse. So I'd find it very peculiar that two different surveys find two different lines. So I think that's my first comment. The second one is for the builder, feedback on whoever's used for surveying. They illegally enter the property with no disclosure, no notification upfront. They were just walking my property to go survey the property and I was very upset. There should have been some mail notification or even a knock on the door. They just literally were walking in my backyard. So I just, I have no qualms with the housing, but I think that that should not happen.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, I can respond. Apologize for you getting upset about the survey. But surveyors have a right to enter any property to conduct their survey business. So obviously, when you do a property line survey, it's understood that it can't all be done internally from the property. Now, this was, this survey was not done by my company, but it was done by a very respected surveyor. And it's unfortunate that you're upset and I apologize for that, but.
Yeah, they didn't wear any material except for a vest. They didn't share who they were, the company, until I went to ask them. Like they were actually on, like near my house. They weren't on the property line. So I just, you know, I do have a family. I don't like people walking on the property without notification.
Understood. If anybody needs to go out there again, we'll make sure they notify you in advance. But it is a state law that they're allowed to do that. So just so you're aware.
All right, so on the issue of the property lines, the survey lines.
That's not the, no.
Anyone else from the public? All right, if you wouldn't mind up to the mic, name and address, please.
Diane McInerney, 164 Elm. I don't know what. No.
One more.
There's a house here and then that's me. What does a private way mean? Does it mean it gets a new name? What is?
No, it's going to be a named roadway. What it, all it, the only thing it means is that there will be a homeowners association who will pay to take care of the road and the town won't have to do it. That's all it means.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. Now, what happens in some towns is they like to, the more linear length of roadway that a town has, the more federal funds they get.
But it's still not enough to cover the.
So we understand that. And we've had some towns that have, we've asked that it be private and they've asked us to make it public. So, but yeah, no problem. It'll remain private.
I think we got a good solution here. If there's no more comments, I think if you can take the feedback, if you want to come back, we need a motion to continue.
Oh, could I just, quickly, I'm sorry for interrupting you. We did get, I did see about 3 o'clock that we got the comments from the reviewer. Does this board have any problem? Obviously, any resolution, any letters would go to this board through him. Do you guys have any problem? If I have to, if I have a question, can I contact him?
We would like you to work directly with him so that it can expedite the process.
Thank you. Most boards say the same thing. But some say, no, everything has to be done through us. So that does make it work better. Thank you.
And Mr. Cheshia is well aware of that and available to that.
He's been doing reviews for a long time, so I'm sure he deals with that all the time. Thank you.
All right, do I have a.
Sorry, just quickly, just, Stephanie, if you could just clarify, I think with line disputes, that's not under the jurisdiction or the authority of the planning board. That's a private matter that private property owners have to take on with any developers. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
We have nothing to.
Correct. I mean, this, and I think that may have been one of my comments. I think the plans are signed, they're signed by the PE, right?
That's me.
They're supposed to be signed by a land surveyor as well.
Yes, they will.
So they need to be stamped and that's what the board relies on, is the professional integrity of the land surveyor.
So I already got you a revised set. So the first set was stamped by the surveyor and I forgot. So the next set will absolutely be stamped by the surveyor.
All right, thank you. So do we have a motion to continue?
You need to ask him when.
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, when? It's a good thing. Sorry, it's getting late. I'm trying to move things along. We've got a lot still to go. So, I mean, the 17th is coming kind of close, so we've got the 4th available, November 4th.
Actually, could we try for the 17th? I haven't, like, I haven't reviewed, it's substantial, the amount of comments, but I quickly looked at it and a lot of it is just statements. Would it be okay for us to go to the 17th?
I mean, they can do that and if they're not ready.
Yeah, we can continue.
Well, actually, I don't know how you're, we need revised plans a week before the meeting.
Okay, so we're never going to be able to do that. So, and I'm away on the 4th.
Okay, so we have the 25th of November?
I guess that would be the first possible time.
We have the 25th of November or the 2nd of December, whichever.
Do you want to continue to the 4th? Because we'll have the revised plans in hand. And if the stormwater review is, if the peer reviewer confirms that your changes in revisions are compliant, I don't know that we need, no offense, you to come back.
You know, the evening.
I mean, but if it doesn't, then, if it doesn't, then you can continue to the next meeting after.
They need, the Conservation Committee.
Right, they still have, right.
We'll still have to deal with them. You guys can close before that, whatever you choose to do.
Yeah, well, that's also up to the applicant because if they come up with changes, you don't want to close and then have to come back to us, so. But, I mean, if you want to, if they want to continue to the 4th at their own.
I appreciate that.
Okay, all right.
Motion to continue to the November 4th, Kenham?
Second, Ken.
All right, we'll do roll. Kenham?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Sigmund?
Aye.
And Wofas and I as well, continue to the 4th and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. All right, now we got another public hearing for proposed zoning amendments. Do you want to read us in?
Sure thing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 5, MGL, the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024.
Pardon me, if you wouldn't mind, pardon me, need to take in the conversation out. Thank you. Sorry.
Do you want me to respect?
No, you're good. Keep going.
Kathy, you sound like a robot. I can't really understand you too well.
I'm going to start again. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 5, MGL, the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, at 6:30 PM. This hearing will be held in person at the Eastern Town Hall, 136 Elm Street, and via Zoom for the purpose of receiving public comments concerning the following amendments to the Eastern Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 235 of the Eastern Town Code. Amend the zoning map of the town of Easton, Massachusetts, dated May 20th, 2024, by rezoning 388 Depot Street, MAP 38U, Lot 17, from residential to business. Amend relevant sections of Chapter 235 to allow small to medium-scale solar energy systems as in allowed accessory use in residential and business districts. Amend 235-51 dot one B dot one. Foundry compact neighborhood zoning overlay for consistency with other sections of the Bylaw regulating residential housing. Amend 235-44 and 235-60, consistent with amendments to MGL C 40A 3 relative to accessory dwelling units. Copies of the proposed amendments and amended zoning map are available for review at the Planning and Economic Development Office at 136 Elm Street, Northeastern Massachusetts, during regular business hours and at a very long URL. Do I need to read that out? This notice is available at masspublicnotices.org. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing.
Excellent, thank you. That was a long one. All right, so the first zoning amendment we're going to go through is the zoning map. To amend the zoning map, it includes 388 Depot Street, I think Article Number 7. I don't have to read anything correct or anything or explanation. I think we've had a pretty good, we've had a pretty healthy discussion over this.
Right. I mean, unless anybody, any of the board or have any questions on this.
Any further questions? This is to change the zoning to business to provide the flexibility necessary via special permit to allow the commercial indoor recreational use. We'd had a discussion on this the last time as well. If we are good with, would it make more sense, Stephanie, if we did all the, if we did each zoning one separately and voted it through or vote them all together?
Individually, yes.
All right, unless anybody has any comments, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the change on zoning according to the map presented, Kenham?
Second, Ken.
All right, all in favor, Sigmund?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Kenham?
Aye.
And Wofas and I as well. All right, Article 8, accessory uses, solar.
I, I do have prepared a summary of all of it.
Okay, and we had a really good discussion last time, so a summary, I think, would be great. And I know that there is some. great, and I know that there is some, uh, changes and tables to include. I'm so, um, do you have it, is it in here, or?
No.
You have it? Okay, yeah.
It isn't here, but, uh, this summarizes.
Okay.
So, we, we are proposing, uh, bylaws updates for solar energy systems. Uh, before we go to the details, I would like to do a brief introduction. In the current version of the bylaws, only large system of solar overlay districts are, i- is what is covered, and that is not enough, it doesn't complete the picture of solar system. The change proposed were done using a document published by the State of Massachusetts to help local municipalities and towns with solar energy system of all types. The change proposed will avoid conflict with establishes protection laws of the State of Massachusetts for solar systems, uh, while at the same time protecting the public interest. Important statistic, Houston has allocated three percent of the town area to solar power overlay district, what we call SPOD, what meet the requirements for, for the town. So, here is the summary of all the changes. Uh, accessory uses on, uh, Section 235 14. Uh, small and medium-scale solar energy system that are ground-mounted will be allowed in residential as per requirement in Appendix A and B for, uh, dimensional. Uh, accessory structures, 238 18. Same thing, small and medium-scale ground-mounted solar energy system will be allowed in residential as per requirements on the appendix. It's mentioned that large-scale system only be allowed in SPOD. And, uh, it states that all roof-mounted are permitted without restrictions and without site review, site plan review. A very small little detail, there is in, uh, Section 238 28, that is parking and, and lording. Uh, we added Section 6, that small and medium, medium-sized scale solar energy system use, use as parking canopies are permitted, encouraged, without any, uh, restriction. On Section 235 49, that is a large-scale ground-mounted, we eliminated the five-acre area specified for large scale. Instead, we add, we added the need for requirements for setback and boundaries required regardless of the power capacity of the, uh, solar, uh, farm. I would like to note that the lower limit for large, uh, ground-mounted, uh, system is two hundred and fifty kilowatts, and that is a large, smaller than five acres, therefore, the five acres is a limiting restriction, therefore, it was eliminated. Article eleven are where all the definitions for the bylaws are located. Some definitions on the current bylaws are located on the SPOD, on the overlay. I eliminate, we eliminated all the definitions for solar system, and we moved them to the place where they should be, that is definition of terms. In this place, all the small, medium, and large, roof-mounted and ground-mounted are well-defined, as well as all the other terms needed for understanding solar system. Appendix A, on the table of principal uses, ground-mounted system, uh, require, this is principal uses, uh, requires, uh, ZBA besides industrial and municipal districts. On Appendix A, for accessory uses, permitted for small, medium, ground, and roof-mounted for all. Uh, the specification for the need for site, uh, plan review are on the body of what we already mentioned. On Appendix B, dimension and density, we added boundaries and minimum sizes for solar system to be, uh, for the large, uh, systems, SPODs, uh, accessory uses for medium and small ground-mounted system, uh, to provide the boundaries for these systems, uh, for the need that is considered, uh, by the State of Massachusetts under the, uh, uh, regulation that we can, uh, put on the bylaws.
This was a lot of work. Thank you. Like, it is incredibly impressive, that, the amount of knowledge, but also the amount of work that went into this for both you and our, both you and Alan, so thank you, first and foremost. Uh, does anyone have any questions on this one? Any further discussion?
I was just hoping to have more time to be able to kinda digest this, um, and look into the language. I have, I think, I'm wondering if there needs to be language in there that talks more about, things like, for example, stormwater management. A lot of these things are built on large concrete bases, and how that might impact residential property and abutting sites, um, as well as groundwater protection issues, and a few other things that I've been kind of mulling in my head, um, that I haven't really had a chance to get into, so, at the same time, I don't wanna delay the progress, but I was hoping we might have some more time to maybe discuss it further.
Unfortunately, from my understanding of this work, we come up, Stephanie, but we have to vote on it today in order for it to get to town meeting.
Oh, today's the last day for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're.
We're right up against the.
Um, regarding.
Yeah, continue, please.
Regarding, I'm sorry. Regarding stormwater management, so, the stormwater management bylaw, which we're reviewing next, there's, Thursday, um, covers any disturbance of an acre or more. So, if, if this were to create, um, if someone on their property, but I don't think it, I, I don't think they'd be creating a solar system that would be an acre, because that would be large scale, so, um, yeah, I mean, that, that's, I, I think that concern is valid. I also think it talks more about stormwater management in general, and what people can do on their property, that's a single-family residence. Because right now, once, if some, uh, single-family residence is part of a subdivision, the subdivision is designed to handle the stormwater, um, if it's being built anew, but we don't, aside from, again, what the new regulation will be, uh, proposing and requiring, because this is what the EPA is requiring, regardless of whether it's residential or commercial or new subdivision, um, if there is disturbance of, um, more than an acre of land, the project will need to comply with certain stormwater management requirements. But that, I wouldn't expect that we'd see a solar, right? So, I'm just kind of talking through it.
Yeah, and the other thing, too, that I was thinking about was, I know that there's language in there for protection of agricultural lands, but I was thinking about trees. Also, I think that there's potential for a lot of trees to be cut down, um, if folks pursue, you know, chunks of solar on their property, and I don't know if there's a way to kind of, on the one hand, I want residents to be able to install the solar, but on the other hand, I think there are, there's pros and cons to it, um, but I just wanted to kind of make sure, I guess, how, that's one of my concerns, basically, is, is clear-cutting trees and able to, to be able to install solar, um, and I've seen that happen in other communities.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna defer to you as the expert, I'm sorry, on the solar piece.
The, the, on, on the large scale, so, one of the ways to limit the issue of cutting trees is the boundaries. So, i- i- if you look at Appendix B, the boundaries that I said are pretty large, okay? That mean the setbacks. And the, and that allows for trees to be still there and not shade the solar systems. But those can be made bigger even, uh, and that, so, on the large scale, I put fifty, fifty feet of, uh, setbacks, and that was in consultation with an expert on solar systems that worked with me, about the size, the average size of trees, and the shade they provide, and you have fifty feet of boundaries, and the only trees that they are need to be taking are the one where the solar farm is located. But there is no way around it. If there are, if, 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 if the property is not clear, they will need to take trees down. Now, on the other hand, we need to be on the practical side. Taking trees down is very expensive, uh, on a property. And the, the, the payback of a solar system is, is to be considered, so, some people actually do not do solar system in their houses, because they need to take trees down, and the cost of that. Uh, so, it, it's not that immediate that someone will go cut the trees and put a solar system. They could, but, uh, there are limitations. I, I think you didn't.
In fact, there are companies that come door-to-door and encourage it, and will pay for some of it.
There is other things that you didn't mention, and it's more problematic than that, that is, the use of agricultural land for solar systems. Uh, and there, there is a contradiction in terms on the state law in between the one that protects, uh, farmland, and the one that says you cannot prevent solar system to be put down. Uh, it's very clear that on farmland, you can only do solar system that are used for the need of the farm, and not for, you know, producing energy. There is, there is no way, I, I think, to regulate that, and if you put too many, uh, limitations and restrictions, uh, we will be violating the Massachusetts law that protects solar systems. So, whatever you put there, it will need to go to council. I think this need to go to council, to, to make sure that we are not violating.
Well, we, we did send the draft to council.
Yeah.
And did not receive comments.
Yeah.
And, and we did on the A D U, so.
No comments is good comments, basically?
Yeah.
All right, so.
I, I, I can tell you, Walpole, uh, was denied, they, they didn't want to allow, uh, solar system someplace, and the judge denied their denial and reversed their decision because of the Massachusetts law. And it was, and it, it, they were not taking trees down, or anything like that, so, I, I don't think, taking trees down, or, uh, drainage problems will, will be, it's about, there is a site review for all the ground-mounted.
Yeah, and I guess, too.
That's the place where you ask about drainage.
There's also some issues around, I think, decommissioning as well, um, and what's required there, and fencing as well, um, I think is an issue. But, I think, um, my understanding is that the state is hopefully going to issue guidance on this next year, um, or the year after, um, so I guess it can always be amended, um, what's put in now, um, but that's, yeah, those are just my thoughts.
Yeah, there is, there is a medium-sized ground-mounted on a private, on a residential area in Eastern. I went to see it.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know if you know what it is, it's, uh, the prospect that on the intersect, but doesn't matter.
And is that entirely for use by, it just seems also counter, it seems contradictory to me that as a town, so if you have the larger, so, systems that supply just your home make total and absolute sense to me. Systems that are larger than that, and you're essentially commercializing your land to produce energy to sell back to the grid, is more of a business use than a residential use, and we're so restrictive around what's allowed for businesses, but here, um, the, the rules are so lax, um, and potentially could have an impact on the aesthetics of an entire neighborhood, um, and on the water, um, the way that it moves and the groundwater, and, and, and all sorts of things there, so, I just wanna, I just, I guess I just wanna make sure that we're treading with a little bit of caution, um, and thinking all of this stuff through.
I, I think the caution is not to put many obstacles, if not, you are violating the law.
That's, uh, yeah, but there's a, there's a limit, right? There's a line. There are a lot of communities out there that have put these things in place, and that have stuck, like, um, I'd have to look back at all my notes, but some of them even require pollinator-friendly plantings and things like that in their bylaws under these sorts of solar arrays, um, to ensure that it's not just, you know, gravel or mulch or something like that. So, you know, there's a line somewhere. Nobody really knows where that line is yet, I don't think.
Stephanie, I'm gonna just throw this at you really quick, and I wanna hear your thoughts, or?
I think Joanne brings up a lot of good points. I know Amos has been working on this for a while, and for good reasons, um, one.
And I should've talked to him sooner, and I'm sorry about that, Amos, but.
One, yeah, one, um, you know.
I asked for volunteers to review many times.
Yeah, concerns with compliance, but also, um, with the need to reduce carbon emissions. So, I mean.
From, from the practical side, I don't see how even a medium size affect the drainage. There are pulls into the ground, there is nothing. They, they try not to do cement or anything else, because it costs a lot of money. It's, it's, it's pretty cheap and simple, if you look at all the farms.
I mean, the large scale, we do, they are subject to stormwater management requirements.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
And if someone were putting it on a commercial property, that would be probably an expansion of use, but as you said, site plan review comes into play.
We could add that, too.
Yeah.
On the bylaws, that, uh, storm, uh, management should be approved.
So, I think it would be very difficult to try to amend this tonight on the fly.
That was maybe my next question.
This is, this is a solid start, and, I mean, we could put it off and continue to work on it for town meeting in May. The board could decide to do that. It's, it's up to the board.
Yeah, my thought on that is, is that the only person who can really speak to this with any sort of additional validity or authority really is the state. I think a lot of towns have asked the state to do that, and we aren't really getting that yet, so, I mean, I'd be comfortable going forward with this iteration of it, but then when additional guidance does come out, just making sure that we review it again and see if there are any things that need to be changed.
I think I'm comfortable. I, I would think that, that's, I'd be comfortable moving forward with this as is, with the hard work that you've done, with the idea of that, if something comes out from the state in the future, we revisit it, um, as we would any, any other.
Won't be the first time that we.
Yeah.
You did say it won't be.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I, I think it's our next, our next amendment, we're actually reviewing something that was, was passed, so. Um, if everyone is comfortable with that, um, then we can, do I have a motion to move forward with, or I should say, is there any, any comments from the, what, do we have two people in the public? Maybe, one? Anybody from the public?
One person, no, no hesitation.
All right, uh, it's a very lonely public hearing. A motion to, um, move forward with this amendment? Almost, this one should be yours.
Yes.
This is your hard work.
Motion to approve the changes and updates to solar energy systems as presented. Kedham?
Second, Kedham.
All right, all in favor, Ziggman?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well. All right, moving on to, and I just had it in front of me, Article 9, the zoning amendments, foundry compact neighborhood zoning overlay. Does anyone have any further comments or thoughts on this? It is, as was discussed in previous meetings, just a housekeeping item to allow finished basements into the zoning overlay. Any comments? Anyone in the public? All right, do I have a motion to move this one forward? Anyone?
A motion to move forward the foundry compact neighborhood zoning overlay changes.
Kedham, second.
All right, all in favor, Kedham?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well. All right, moving on to Article 10, ADUs. We have also discussed these kind of in length at previous meetings. Does anybody have any other further thoughts, comments, or considerations to the amendment as presented in our binder? Crickets, anyone from the public? All right, do I have a motion to move this amendment forward? Is that the right wording, move it forward?
Yeah, vote to recommend, vote to approve.
Vote to recommend.
Vote to recommend, Kedham.
All right, thank you.
Second, Kedham.
Second.
All right, so, Kedham?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well. All right, I think we have, do we need to close the public hearing? Are we good?
Yes.
Okay, can we?
Motion to close the public hearing on the amendments.
Do we have a second?
Second, Ziggman?
Thank you. All right, so, all in favor, Ziggman?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Wolf is an aye as well. All right, public hearing is closed. Yes, all right, there we go. So next on, we're gonna, motion to, sorry, approval of the minutes for September 30th. I just had one super small comment on the minutes. So it says that Ms. Dequette said all of the plants are true native species. On the second page, Ms. Danielson said true native species are preferred. And then it says that they want to put in true native species. I think she said it was native species and Stephanie said true native species because that's what I learned, that there was actually a difference. Because I did not know that. So it's just striking out the word, I think, true in the first one. Because she, she said it was native, you wanted, said true native species are preferred.
Correct.
So it's just striking out that first, first true.
Yes.
Oh, right, she didn't say true.
Yeah, she didn't, she-
Okay, I will do it.
And that was how I learned that there's a difference because I wasn't exactly clear there, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Did anybody else have any comments?
Nope.
All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the, Kedham?
With the change. Motion to approve the minutes with the change.
We need a change first, yeah.
Second, Ziggman?
All right, all in favor, Kedham?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well. There are no pertinent items not reasonably anticipated by me, so we're good there. Stephanie, do you have anything to comment on?
No, we already decided to cancel the meeting on the 21st.
Do we need to vote on that, or are we good?
No, I think we're fine.
Okay, perfect.
The board agrees to that.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Kedham, second.
All right, all in favor, Ziggman?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well. We are adjourned, thank you all. This was a long meeting, but it was very-